Good evening, I'd like to call to order the joint study session of Lakewood City Council, as well as the Budget and Audit Committee on August 17, 2020. Of course, we are meeting virtually. So I would ask the clerks to please call the role.
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Gutwine?
Here.
Bita?
Here.
Skilling?
Here.
Springsteen?
Here.
Franks?
Here.
Johnson?
I am here.
Labir?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
You have a forum.
All right, well, thank you very much, and again, I'd like to welcome those who are tuning in this evening, and this is a study session, so we will have an opportunity for public input. And that phone number is 1-312-626-6799, with the web ID is 927-77670673. Press pound once you're in, and when you would like to request the opportunity to speak, you will press 9, will get that three minutes in. So this is an ongoing discussion that we started some time ago, and it is in collaboration with our Budget and Audit Committee. And I'm trying to see who we have on board tonight from the Budget and Audit Committee. I don't know, we have Mr. Wickman, Mr. Ludwixson, or I don't see them at this point, but they may tune in. And so we will now turn to item three, which is the presentation and discussion. And so I'll invite Ms. Bjorklund, our Chief Financial Officer, to take it over. Once she's done, I will then go to our Chair, Counselor Bita, and then we can go through and get some public input, and then Council and Budget Committees. I see Counselor, or I see Mr. Wickman is here raising his hand, so I do see you. Okay, Ms. Bjorklund, the floor is yours, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, glad to be back again and talk about budget again. I'm going to share my screen as usual, presentation. Okay, thumbs up that everybody can see it and hear me. Cool. Okay. So, tonight Erin Nordman, the Revenue Manager, and I are presenting the information. So hopefully Erin's also on. I will be discussing the budget preview, and Erin will be discussing the new revenue options. So Erin, her group works on sales tax and collecting it, and then also talking to businesses about what sales tax they're providing, and verifying that it's accurate in terms of what they should be submitting. And recently Erin and her team have been taking on new responsibility to analyze all of revenue, not just sales tax. So her team put together the white papers that it will be discussing tonight. So the overview of what we're going to be talking about is the economic outlook, which I'll be discussing, and the revenue impact and the expense reductions. And then Erin will be discussing the potential revenues, and then we'll answer any questions you may have. In terms of the economic outlook, for our Colorado unemployment, it's 10.5 versus 10.2 in May. But we did have recent preliminary update that the July numbers are lower than what we're seeing for June. And then the Denver Metro unemployment is 11%, versus 10.5 in May. And then, as you know, the additional $600 per week enhancement unemployment expired on July 31. Although the President made an executive order to extend it at $400 per week, we're not sure how that's going to work, so I don't have any more information on that one. For Lakewood sales tax, we have some good news, that the June sales tax is only 3% down versus June of 2019. And we were expecting much worse numbers than that. However, please bear in mind that it's very unpredictable what's going to happen with sales tax for the rest of 2020. We really don't know what's going to happen in the future. But we're very happy with the June numbers being a lot better than we are visually anticipating. For the breakout of where that resides in terms of the variances to June of 2019, the hotels are down 60%, department stores 30%, restaurants 23%, home improvement up 34%, electronic shopping up 84%, and all other up 8%. So in comparison to last month, the hotels, department stores, and restaurants have improved a little bit, and the electronic shopping and home improvement is a little lower. And then all other was an improvement. So this is the pie chart that you're used to seeing, and it gives you more detail than what I explained on the last slide. The piece that I really want to focus on for this slide is the box on the left. As we've talked about previously, before COVID, January, February was down 1%. Then we had March down 16%, April down 27%, May down 14%, and then June is only down 3%. So year-to-date, that's an 11% down at $3.9 million. And remember that this is just for sales tax. And what this is showing is the trending of what's happening with sales tax. As we mentioned at the beginning, Erin's group does do audits with the businesses, so they're looking at how much they're actually paying and what they should be paying. So the delayed remittance that's below that year-to-date number of 1.1 million is audit dollars that, or delayed payments that have been made year-to-date. So if you include that as well as the trending, then our year-to-date number is 7% down, which is a $2.8 million decline from the 2019. So it's a little bit better than if you're just looking at the trending of what's happening with sales tax. So the expense reduction approach, so as you know, I presented last time, is that we had to make a $17 million reduction in order to offset the decline that we have in revenue. So that's not just the decline that we have so far. As you can see, just for sales tax, it's about 2.8 million. But with all of revenue, and then also forecasting the rest of the year as well as 2021, we're seeing a $17 million reduction that needs to be made. So just a reminder on how our process worked for this. We did have all the directors work together to come up with plans for reductions. And then these were reviewed with Kathy to determine if she was comfortable with accepting the recommendations. So for 2020, we made a reduction of $10.6 million, and for 2021, we had a reduction of $6.4 million. And each department evaluated the reductions that would be sustainable rather than long-time reductions. So it was very important for us to focus on how could we sustain at a lower level versus making one-time reductions that we would have to make further cuts in the future. We also looked at the allocation of resources across the city functions, because we wanted to make sure that we're looking globally versus in silos within each department. And then there were some recommendations for reorganizing some teams to realize operating efficiencies across the city. And we always kept in mind the reductions intended to minimize impact to the citizens. But the general fund reductions, so just a reminder, this is just for general fund in terms of our reductions. What's outlined here is what we reduced for 2020 as well as 2021. So you may recall that Kathy Hudson had implemented a hiring freeze at the end of 2019. And due to that hiring freeze, that put us in a better position to be able to make these reductions. So that first line that you see on there for vacant positions, it has seven positions, $3.7 million. That is what was identified based on freezing the positions up to the point of the target, of setting the target. After setting the $17 million target, the staff, the department directors, did identify additional areas that they were seeing attrition, or they're expecting attrition to occur, and that's those additional 17 positions that are identified for $1.6 million in 2020. We also had savings due to the facility closures, which is primarily for community resources and the furloughs that were implemented for that. Excuse me. So for non-personnel reductions for 2000, oh gosh, I hope we're not losing my voice again.
Take your time, we can take a quick break too, if you need, no worries.
I think I'm okay. So for non-personnel reductions for 2019, two levels. We reduced what the levels were for 2020 non-personnel expenses so that we'd be at the levels of 2019. There had been some increases, as you can see, a $3 million reduction from the 2020 level to the 2019 level. Some of the departments also made additional reductions in travel, training, supplies, and other costs on top of their 2019 level reductions. So in total, that is 10.6 million for 2020. For 2021 budget reductions, we are also anticipating that we will have attrition of about 24 positions. So this reduction of the 24 positions is really based on our natural attrition and what we lose each year. The personnel savings due to facility closures will continue a little bit in 2020, of only about $200,000. And then we have reduction of overtime expenses for $400,000. And then we are deferring maintenance and reallocation, and reallocating some of the resources, which is about $3 million. And revenue, we also have a small amount of revenue that's identified in specific areas. There will be increase that will be $500,000 offset of the reduction that needs to be done in 2021. So that's the total of $6.4 million. So that gets us back to the $17 million reduction. So the impact of the budget reductions. So we will be conducting one police academy, typically there are two per year. And the reason for that, police academy only doing one per year is, or in 2021, is because of currently, the projection is that we will be over strength. So we'll only need one police academy in 2021 to maintain at the strength level. And then also service response times may be slower in areas such as planning and public works. And deferring maintenance may impact system performance and efficiency of employees. We also do not have salary increases in the budget for 2021. So foregoing salary increases creates a risk of loss, losing high performing employees. So for this section, I just wanted to end with the budget calendars. We did have a meeting, as the Mayor mentioned, we did have a meeting with the Budget and Audit Board on August 13, where we reviewed this information as well. We've got some questions and feedback, and then we have the meeting today. And then on September 14, we will be having a budget discussion where we'll go through the entire budget. Then we'll have the public hearing on October 12, and then the second one on October 26. And before I turn it over to Erin, I wanted to address a question that came up in the last budget discussion. The question was, is finance looking at revenue trends, and where is revenue going in the future? And the answer is yes. We have been analyzing the revenue. We focused on, or attention on the expense reductions first, because that's what's needed to address the immediate concerns that revenue was declining considerably due to COVID. The look at revenue is now more of a long-term sustainability, not for short-term fixes. Really, the reductions we made in the cost was more of that short-term, we have to make an immediate change. But the discussion today, and looking at revenue in general, is really more of looking at the long-term of how do we maintain a sustainable revenue for the services that you want to provide to the city. As I mentioned, Erin is now looking at revenue overall versus just sales tax. This is two parts. One, is she and Nicole have been working on, they have requests by Council to provide white papers that we're reviewing this evening. And then second is looking at the trends of what is happening with our existing revenue, and researching other cities throughout the US. And we'll have an update on that for the September budget review. For this discussion, the important thing to recognize or see is that at a high level, with our largest revenue stream, which is sales tax, we're seeing sales tax flatten, and regardless of COVID, and we're seeing signs of a downtrend. We're also seeing that fees are not covering the cost of the demand for services. And Erin's going to walk through, or talk about what is influencing our revenue streams, and then we'll have more of a discussion during the September budget review. For the revenue portion of the discussion, what we're trying to accomplish today is to have a discussion of the revenue opportunities so that there's an understanding, and then get some guidance on if there are items you would like us to research further. So, Mayor, I'm assuming you want to take questions at the end versus now, is that correct?
Yeah, that's okay, we'll wait till the presentation is over, and then I'll go to the Chairman of the Budget and Audit, and then we'll have some public input, and then we can go into Council.
So I will turn it over to Erin now.
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks Holly, good evening Erin.
Hi. So as Holly mentioned, the leadership team has been actively working to recover the $17 million gap. And I have been tasked with looking more at the revenue opportunities. As you know, our budget is heavily reliant on sales tax, and we are very vulnerable to economic fluctuations. And I've listed here for you some of the challenges that we are facing, some of which are unique to us in the city of Lakewood. The combined total of all of them is very unique to us, so we'll go through each one of these separately. So the first one is mature community, and this can be thought of in various ways. One is that we are relatively landlocked, so to speak, and we don't have a lot of opportunities for growth. And so that does limit our abilities as it relates to sales tax. The other way that you can think about this is the demographic. We know that we have a maturing community, and their buying behaviors are very, very different. And so that is also having an impact here. As we went into the pandemic, we saw online sales increasing significantly. With a mature community, often you don't have them going online. With a mature community, often you don't have them going online. And so that is going to change the atmosphere of sales tax here. The second point is related to food. In January of two thousand nine, the decision was made that we would start exempting food. And that was to put us in line with the state. The state of Colorado also chose to exempt food at that point in time. And we think that that's roughly an eight to ten million dollar hit actually to our revenue stream. The third point is related to our tax rate. We have stayed at three percent since January of two thousand and six. As you look at the surrounding municipalities, we are one of the lowest. There's only a handful that are around three percent. Everyone else on average is about three point seven five percent. So we are pretty low. The fourth point is related to Tabor. As you know, we are heavily restricted with Tabor. And so our, our growth is limited and that is unique to us. There are many other municipalities that have debroosed. So we're dealing with the Tabor limitations at this point and we'll talk more about that in a moment. And then the last point is our shift from consumption of goods, which are taxable to the consumption of services, which are currently not taxable. We do have a few services that we tax, but again, it's, it's relatively small in the grand scheme of things. Okay, Holly, you can go ahead and advance. So what we're here to talk about today are some ideas that my division and others across the city have come up with. These are for you to evaluate and we tried to stay as unbiased as possible. We tried to look at each one from various angles. And so the white papers were put together with a lot of backgrounds so that you can get a feel for the lay of the land. And then we are looking to you to provide us some direction. Which items would you like for us to go ahead and pursue, or which items would you like for us to research further? Okay, you can go ahead and advance. So the first item is the adoption of the revised tax code. So in two thousand, let's see, the General Assembly adopted Senate Joint Resolution in two thousand and fourteen. And that was urging the municipalities to work with the Colorado Municipal League to come up with a unified set of definitions. And these are terms that are used throughout all of our tax codes. So as you know, each home rule municipality can determine how they tax. But the standardized definition would put us on an even playing field in terms of terminology, which makes it easier for the businesses to understand. So with the adoption of the revised tax code, which is one of the options that council could pursue, we can simplify taxation for businesses, again, by having those standardized definitions. And the, I'm going to say, I need to back up a little bit. These do build off of one another and you can read more about that in the white papers. So the first step would be to adopt the revised tax code. And we have spent more than four years working with legal to redesign our tax code and make it better for businesses to understand and make it simpler. So the second point here is that we can now opt into the state's sales and use tax system. This is something that's stemming from the Wayfair case. And so in order to be able to opt in, we have to have the standardized definitions. This central portal would allow businesses to remit all of their returns in one location. So if you think about Home Depot, they operate in multiple jurisdictions. They could now go to the state's portal and they could remit their taxes all in one location instead of going to each municipality separately. So that's a time saver for them. The second piece of this is that online retailers or out-of-state retailers would have one central place where they could go to figure out their licensing and they could also remit taxes. So this is eliminating some of the burden on those smaller businesses. And again, this is essential and this is based on the Wayfair case. The third piece is that this would allow us to expand our taxation to those businesses that do not have a physical presence in Lakewood. So think of those as online retailers. Amazon has a physical presence, therefore they are already licensed with us and remitting. But there are many other online retailers that are quite large in size and they do not have a physical presence here in Colorado or in Lakewood. So they are currently not collecting and remitting tax to us. The fourth item here is that we can align the application fee structure for our tax licenses. This is an add-on. If we're already evaluating a new tax code, this is an opportunity for us to standardize and make things simpler. So as we look at our licensing process, we do the same process for a business that is selling goods as we do for a service-only business. However, we are currently only charging a fee for the durable goods business. Because of the language in the code and the way that it is written, this would be a council decision versus us making a change to a fee schedule. And the last item here is related to licensing. We currently do not have license renewals, but this is something that many other jurisdictions do have. And we would have the opportunity to evaluate whether this is something we want to consider. We would get better information from businesses and that would keep us from losing contact with them, which at the current time results in a lot of staff time pursuing delinquencies and licensing. So with a license renewal, you could have the option of looking at a renewal every year or every two years, whatever frequency you would like. And there could be a fee associated with that. Okay, next slide please. So another way that we can influence our taxation is to remove some of the tax exemptions. And this would be an opportunity for us to align with some of our other neighboring jurisdictions or even to align with the state. So the ones that we've identified for you here are medical supplies of practitioners. The second one is electric vehicles. The third one is cigarettes. The fourth one is non-essentials. And the fifth one is a pass-through exemption related to exempt entities. So I'll touch on each one briefly. Again, I would encourage you to read the white papers and then you, you'll get a better understanding of the background. But as it relates to medical supplies, we feel that there has been an expansion of what the intent was of this exemption. We feel that the exemption was intended for the patient. But we have been challenged on this by many of the practitioners. So they now want to take advantage of the exemption as well. For electric vehicles, we currently do have exemptions here and this is one that the state has eliminated. We know that there's going to be growth in electric vehicles. And this would be an opportunity for us to remove the exemption and go ahead and continue to tax them as we would tax any other vehicle. The third one is actually quite complex, so I do want you to read that one carefully. But we do have many opportunities as it relates to cigarettes. In your white papers, there is a list of options and some things that other municipalities have done. It could be a special tax on top of our standard three percent. It could be special licensing. It could be a special taxation on vaping products and other tobacco paraphernalia. It could have licensing requirements. I think there's maybe five different options there, so I would look carefully at the cigarettes. The next one is related to non-essentials. Think of that as your carryout food. When you order a hamburger, they need to package it in some way. And currently they're usually wrapping it in paper and then they put it in another bag and maybe it's in a container. The state has chosen to remove this exemption of non-essentials. So only the items essential to get you the product would be exempt. So that could be your cups. It could be the wrap around your hamburger. It could be the container around your french fries. But those are all considered non-essentials. Or sorry, those are the essentials. The non-essentials would be your napkins, your ketchup packets, your straws, extra bags, things like that. The last one is related to the pass-through exemption from exempt entities. So if we were to, if there was to be a construction project for an exempt organization, currently they are allowed to get a letter signed for their contractor so that their contractor can purchase all materials exempt from tax. Many other jurisdictions do not allow this. For those jurisdictions, they would only allow it if the exempt entity was making the purchase directly. So city council could authorize the removal or modification of any of these tax exemptions. The next item is related to the taxation of specific services. As we're seeing right now, the service industry is heavily impacted by what's going on with the pandemic. But typically with a downturn, the service industry is actually less impacted than those that sell durable goods. And so by taxing the service industry in some respect, it would provide more stability to our tax base. So some ways that we could look at this, we could tax all services. We could tax storage facilities. I know we're all very familiar with what those look like around the city. You could tax luxury services, which could include nail salons, massages, landscaping services is a big one. These are all items that are considered luxury in nature and not a must-have. The fourth and fifth items here are currently covered in our code, but we feel that that's a bit of a gray area. And so we are very hesitant to pursue taxation on some of these. So we would be looking for some clarity. And we would like for this to go to a vote instead of us taking this, the legal route. So think of software as a service as something that's cloud-based, perhaps it's a subscription. Informational services, these are databases that you can access. And again, these are things that are in our code today, but it might be a little bit gray. So we want some clarity here. Next slide please. This one is the legalization of specific business activities. So as most of you probably know, there is an initiative, a citizen initiative to collect signatures to get recreational marijuana on the ballot. So at this point in time, we have not really gone into great detail in the white papers about this. But some other things that you might want to consider are special taxes on marijuana or perhaps the delivery of marijuana. These are things that would have to go out to a vote of the public. And then the third item is related to short-term rentals and I know you're very familiar with that one. An occupational privilege tax or a head tax is another opportunity that we should evaluate. There are several cities around the area that currently have this today. So think of this as a tax on businesses that actually operate in the city of Lakewood. So it's not necessarily a tax on the citizens. It's a tax on the business and their employees. And it's relatively small. It's usually two to four dollars per employee. And oftentimes the employer rate matches that of the employees. So this would be an opportunity for us to diversify our revenue. We think it's about a million dollars in terms of value. But we could research that one further if city council wished. The next one would be a modification of Tabor. As you know, Tabor is very complex and it limits the amount of revenue that we are allowed to retain and spend. So when our city revenues decrease, as we're seeing in twenty twenty, what happens is the base gets ratcheted down to that lower level. So it resets. And what we're projecting right now is that it could take us five years to recover from that. So one avenue that we could take is to go back to the voters and ask them if we could establish some language that would allow us to keep our base at the twenty nineteen level. So before the pandemic hit and that would eliminate this ratchet effect. And the last item that we've identified is the annexation of commercial areas. Keep in mind that there is statute about this where it has to be within three miles of our borders. So we are looking at surrounding areas to Lakewood as well as some of those pockets that are within the boundaries of Lakewood currently. So city council could provide some guidance on whether or not this is something they would like to explore. So in terms of next steps, the budget and audit board reviewed all of this presentation last week. And they have some thoughts and ideas that they'll probably share with you tonight. We're asking you tonight to review the, the list of ideas and just identify those areas of interest. Where would you like for us to research further or which items do you want us to go ahead and pursue? We can perform that additional research. We can report back to you on those ideas. And then we can develop a timeline of what this looks like in terms of implementation. Obviously, if this is going to a vote of the citizens, now is probably not the right time to push that forward. It would be really tight. So it would most likely go on the ballot in twenty twenty one. So that concludes what I had in terms of presentation and I'll now turn it back over to the mayor or Holly.
Great. Thank, thank you both very much. Holly, do you have anything you want to add?
Just if there are questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Fantastic. All right. Well, again, well done and I think it's important to emphasize that these different options while may not be palatable to everyone or anyone on council, this was something that was asked by this council for staff to go in and kind of look at these and examine. And these are going to be tough conversations going forward. So with that, I will turn it over to the chairman of the budget audit committee, councillor Bida. And then we'll open public input and begin the council discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. So we had a sort of a dry run of this presentation last week with our budget audit committee on, on the August thirteenth. At that time, we had five of our six members in attendance. One of our citizen members was absent. We also had other members, some other members from council present as well as our mayor. And we had this very gentle discussion. At that time, we had just received the white papers, so we really had not had the opportunity to really delve into them in, you know, in detail. And I think the feeling was let's, that as far as having comments from the individual members on the white papers that you have in front of you, that we would reserve that for today. So what I'll do is I'll just kind of hit these on a thirty thousand foot level type thing and just give you what my impressions were of the feelings of our committee. We didn't really vote on anything, so we didn't really take a vote on each one of these individuals as a recommendation or non-recommendation. It was more just a general discussion. I think I could fairly say that generally the, I think the committee was amenable to further consideration of most of these options with, with the exceptions of a couple, which I will highlight as we get to them. The first one was the adoption of the revised tax code. I think that was pretty much, in my estimation, was sort of a no-brainer. I think the committee felt that that was something that was, you know, low, low hanging fruit, something that we almost needed to do in order to be consistent with what the state has adopted and other surrounding jurisdictions. And given the fact the staff has already put in several years of work in trying to identify areas of our code which needed to be revised, it would appear that a lot of the work's already been done. So we thought this was something that probably the council might want to move forward on. And it would also help us in terms of, you know, some of these definitions that we need to clarify, that would in fact help us enhance our tax collection. So there would be some economic benefit to the city as well, as outlined in the white papers. The economic nexus portion of this I thought was really interesting. And this is really the part where we're talking about the Wayfair, a Wayfair case that came out of the U.S. Supreme Court a couple of years ago. And taking advantage of the ability to, to collect taxes from businesses who sell online to Lakewood residents and ship to Lakewood residents but are not currently collecting taxes and paying taxes to our city. So that one is one that's very interesting. And since we're looking at anywhere from one point two to one point nine million enhancement to the city, again, this seems, I thought the committee felt like this would be fairly obvious thing to pursue further, at least look at further. The removal of modification or tax exemptions, these, these could, I think was recognized could be very tricky. And we need to think about very carefully, especially when you're talking about medical exemptions, you know, of, you know, of, of medical supplies, testing kits, wheelchairs and so forth. That could be looked at as essential and necessary equipment. So I think this one is, we, we would say, I think the committee was looking at with, with some caution. I didn't, I don't know that they said no and absolutely no, but, but at least look at it with some caution. Electric vehicles, I did not hear any strenuous objections against looking at taxing those and, and treating them like other motor vehicles in the city. And again, if I misstate any of these, I'm, I know my committee well enough, they'll, they'll certainly jump in and set me straight. I'll finish this and like give them that opportunity. I think the committee was very interested in the cigarette tax and it is complicated. There's a number of nuances to that. But I think if it included vaping, I got the sense that the committee was in favor of at least moving forward on that to, to some sort of conclusion. Passed through exemptions for exempt entity contractors. Again, this would talk about government contractors or non- or tax exempt businesses. And passing their exemptions through contractors. I think there was a generally a feeling that that's something we ought to look at as well, especially in light of the fact that we've got the federal government sitting here in, in, in Lakewood and with GSA being the primary contractor for federal government agencies, headquartered, region, region eight headquarters at Federal Center. This could have a significant impact on our revenue collection going forward. And bears further, I think the committee felt it bears further review. Taxation of specific services, I think the committee was receptive to that. Software as services, I think that's complicated and may require some additional thought and study before we would want to jump into that. With regard to the legalization of specific business activities, especially with regard to the marijuana issue, which is pending. I think the committee felt that it would be best if we did not get involved in that at this point, which is not to say that there isn't a, an appetite for imposing some taxes on this, but we were very concerned about if we did anything at this point that we might be seen as either tipping the scales in one direction or the other on this ballot issue. And that's the last thing we want to do is, is be seen as tipping it one way or the other. So I think generally the feeling was let's, let's just hold off on any action in this area until we see where the ballot issue goes. I hope I said that right. Occupational privilege tax, again, that, that is something that may involve federal employees. And I don't, I don't know if we know whether or not we can impose such a tax on, on federal employees, but again, given the huge federal presence here in Lakewood, not only with Federal Center, but a number of other agencies that are satellited around the Federal Center. This could have a significant impact, but we also have to be aware that it may have an impact on our, on our businesses, local businesses as well. So I think it bears some further review and discussion before we could really make a recommendation one way or another. As far as the Tabor modification, I think, you know, we had a pretty robust discussion on that. I think the feeling of a committee was that, given the fact that we had the de Bruising, de Tabor vote for Lakewood in 2018. Then we turn around 2019, had the same vote again at the county level, which was defeated. It might not be real good timing to be talking about a de Bruising situation at this time, although I do think there was some, some sympathy, including myself for, for taking a very close look at this ratcheting effect. And I think you gotta call it the ratcheting down effect is the one we're concerned about. We don't mind the ratcheting up effect. It's the ratcheting down that we're concerned about. But I, but I think we felt that the timing was not probably the best at, at this point. So that was the consensus, I think, of the committee. Annexation of certain commercial areas, I think there was generally some interest in the committee with that as well. But as long as it doesn't include residential, I don't think there was any interest in including any residential areas in that annexation consideration as well. Right. That's the extent of my notes. If I misstated anything, please, please set me straight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. No, I think, I think that was a good summary of kind of where things were at. And I know that again, that those members will be able to chime in here in a second. So before we open the floor, Ms. Mallard, do we have anybody on the phone wishing to speak?
We have David Wickman and then a phone caller as well.
Okay. So Mr. Wickman, we'll come back to him as he's part of the budget audit committee and for our caller, we'll get your three minutes. If you give us your name and ward or address, I'll start your time. Good evening.
It's caller ending in 1-865.
Caller 1-865, if you want to press star nine or maybe you already did.
Hello.
Hello, the floor is yours. If you give us your name and ward or address, I'll start your three minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the opportunity to comment. This is Bill Schor. I live at 2307 South Gray Drive. Comments relate to the budget. And as a result of COVID and the economic tumble we're going through, Lakewood will decrease its budgets and cut and consolidate programs and services. As you know from my previous comments, Lakewood can save money and improve services by consolidating its economic development and ecological sustainability operations into one department. Through this innovative department, Lakewood can move toward, towards a state of economic sustainability. A social condition that at a minimum maintains economic security, public safety and social cohesion to assure health, stability and optimism for municipal operations for government, residents and businesses. Presently, both operations have essentially the same strategic objective to foster development that meets present needs without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. Consolidation can unify the presently often contradictory activities of these two operations. The consolidation of economic development and ecological sustainability operations will form an enhanced, better performing new agency. And just as a general comment, over the next several years, you're going to have to be very actively innovative. And I very much caution you to be prepared for the worst. You know, we all want things to get back to where they were. We're in a new time. There's going to be tremendous pressures on growth. And so be careful to not make your economic projections too rosy. Congress may not come through. Be prepared for the worst. And then mayor and council, I just recommend that you form a economic sustainability council. Pull all these different little task forces and councils that are kind of pursuing the same thing. Pull them all under the same tent to pursue the same objective. But otherwise, we appreciate what you're doing and thank you for the time.
Thanks, Mr. Scherer. We appreciate you and we all received your comments as well, I think Friday from Ms. Mallard. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Mallard, anybody else other than our budget audit member?
No one else.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and close that. And I, I would just, just like to say just a couple of things. And one is, I think there's two things. One is the low hanging fruit, which I certainly would support us taking a look and moving forward. Secondly, things that need to go to the ballot. Certainly, I don't think we have the time for that. When you're looking at some of those, I think it is important to incorporate some stakeholder groups. If you're looking at occupation tax, I think you certainly need to include the business community and, and those sorts of things. So I, I kind of divided those in my head as, you know, love to move forward with the low hanging. Have a couple of questions about that. We don't have to address that tonight if it goes forward, such as concerns about state tax collection. I know that's always been one concern is the central, the central collection by the state with remittance. And then do we lose some ability if we were to do some taxation on cigarettes? Do we lose those dollars from the state? So I think that was in the white paper as well. And then I certainly would support marijuana delivery. I think that that seems like an easy one as well. So those are my comments. And again, happy to, to move all these forward in some form or fashion. And so I'll now go to council and Ms. Harrison, you are on the budget audit committee as well as Mr. LeBeere. So I'll start with Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. I would agree that a lot of this, these are all really, really good and in a very interesting ideas to think about. I would echo councillor Bida's comment about the fact that I don't want us to do anything whatsoever as a council regarding the marijuana proposal right now. I don't want this to tip the scale one way or the other. So I feel like we will have time in the future for that to be, if, if the initiative passes, we certainly would have time to get it on the next ballot. So I'm feeling like, you know, that would be something that we would definitely want to wait on and not discuss. That's kind of my personal view. The only question that I had that I wanted to ask, kind of as we were going through all of these, one of the things that I, I kept thinking about is how do we track? If we talk about all the online purchases and I'm talking about like Mercari and you know, some of these online purchases that, that are not through a big Amazon or eBay or whatever. How are we going to be able to track that information? That would be, do you want me to go through my list of questions, Mr. Mayor? Or do you want me to hold those until later?
Yeah. So we have, we have a few hands up. So if you want to ask a couple and maybe others will have the same questions.
Okay. So that would be my first question and, and biggest question kind of applies to a lot of this that we talked about tonight is how do we track it? How do we know that people, especially in small business, that they know that they need to report and how is that going to be handled? Sales and use tax, I know we have done a lot of outreach and I don't want this to feel like I'm pointing fingers at anybody. But we, my husband and I had an agency that we had opened on the same location for 10 years and never had a clue that we were supposed to be paying sales and use tax. No one told us, our accountant didn't tell us or anything else. Then suddenly we got a letter, you know, the famous letter that you owe a lot, which took our breath away. I'm concerned, I don't want another small business. How are we going to do the outreach and how do we gather that information? So that would be question number one. And, and I'm going to ask two other questions and then I'm going to shut up. The, the next one is Holly, on your very first, you were talking about the general fund and one question that, one thing that you said was between 20 and 21, there were going to be about 71 positions affected during that time. Would those be added together? So 40 some in 2020 and another bunch in 20, so there would be a total of 71 positions eliminated or put on furlough and not opened up until maybe Kathy's saying no. So I'm, I'm going to wait for that one.
Okay. So we can try to address those two and maybe the sales and use might be a little bit further down the road as to
That's fine.
You know, what does that look like if we go forward with that? And we can certainly probably get the background on how we go about it currently. So Ms. Bjorkland, Ms. Hodgson, do you want to address those two?
We're prepared to answer that. And thank you for the question, councillor Harrison. I, I'll let Holly explain what those position details are. And, and if I can help Holly, I'm happy to.
So four of the positions, four positions have been eliminated. That they're no longer going to be needed at the city. The rest of the positions are going to be held open without any funding. But if there's a position that comes along and that we need to fill the position, then that will be evaluated, we'll have a process for evaluation for that with Kathy and determine how we want to do, how we want to address that. We're expecting there will be additional vacancies. So we'll be able to have some room to be able to move things around to make sure that we're making sure the key positions are being filled. But the other ones, we're going to have to do without until we have more funding. Or we just do without. Kathy, you want to add anything to that?
Um, yes, thank you. So it looks like, so this is a little bit fluid, right? Because, because when people leave the organization, it's not all at one time. So it looks like today we are 68, we have 68 vacancies. And like Holly just said, there's, there's a point where we, we, we can't keep having vacancies. There's a point where we need to put a cap on that. But the advantage now is that each position that we want to rehire or bring back, those are, are really scrutinized. And we have a, a long conversation with the department head, talking about what that function would be. Can we be more efficient? How can, how can we increase productivity, that kind of thing? So the, the anticipated levels of attrition that Holly spoke of are due to employees that we've heard are, are announcing their retirement, but it's either later this year or at the beginning of next year. So that's what, we have a pretty good sense for folks who are anticipating leaving. Remember, we have a real aging or maturing, as Aaron says, we have a maturing employment group. And luckily, some people are going to be at a point in their career where, where they'll be able to experience happiness in retirement. So we're just trying to be really strategic with refilling positions and to be as, as slim as we can be while also really reducing or really being careful about the impact to our citizens. And, and having said that, I'm going to add one more thing, and that is we, our goal is to stay at strength in the police department. So right now we're a little bit above strength. That's why we think, given the natural attrition that we estimate every year on police, that's why we think we can get by with just one academy. But in that academy, we can be pretty agile. And if we have a lot of, a lot of police personnel who are leaving, we can increase the size of that academy or contract it based on what the trends are. And as you know, it takes almost, I think about 16 months from start to finish to get a sworn agent from training all the way to on the street. So it, it, it's a little tougher with the police department. It's not as easy to predict. But we've got a pretty good formula together and we, we're, our goal is to stay at strength so that our citizens experience the same level of policing as they have. I hope that's clear.
And we'll continue to monitor it every month where we are in terms of vacancies and have reviews with Kathy to determine if we need to make any adjustments. So on the first question that you had, we'll be very thoughtful in terms of how we communicate and how often we communicate and how many forms we communicate. But I think Aaron can give a little more detail on how we can track and then also how they've done communications in the past.
So I think the big thing to remember here is that there is a sense of awareness that many jurisdictions across the country are now starting to tax these businesses that have economic nexus. So it's not just Colorado and it's not just the city of Lakewood. It's going to be broad across the country. Everyone is trying to figure this out. The second piece that we need to keep in mind is that with the state's portal, the SUT system, there will be an element of education there as well. So when a business is going to do, is going to sell into Colorado, they will have to go to that portal or they will have to go figure out their licensing requirements. And that is an opportunity for education. So we're working with the developers of that system to figure out what that looks like. In terms of tracking, we license all of our businesses and we keep track of their industry codes. So we would be able to track any out of city businesses and we can watch that growth. to know what portion of it would be related to economic nexus. It's imperfect, um, but we would have a pretty good gauge on that.
Thank you. Okay. So we have a bunch of hands up. I'm going to try to go in line here and a couple of questions or comments would be great. So I'll just read who all I have and I tried to pick it up as I came, but I have, uh, Mr. LeBeere, Mr. Wickman, um, Mr. Skilling, Ms. Vincent, Ms. Gutwine, Mr. Abel, Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Franks. So, Mr. LeBeere.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a couple of quick comments to any citizens who might be watching. Um, and I want to thank Counselor Bida and, uh, you, Mayor, for, uh, sort of giving us a summary and, and your perspectives. Um, I think those are good summaries on, uh, I think what we're trying to achieve. But I just wanted to mention to our citizens that this conversation really started, um, kind of a couple of years ago, really sort of, uh, came out of the first discussions about Tabor. Uh, when we were talking about revenue and how we were talking about getting projects done for our citizens. And, uh, this is really just a continuation of this. I think it's two major key components. One is, um, how to sort of recession proof, um, uh, the city. And that's sort of the situation we're, uh, starting to see ourselves in, uh, now. So how do we better diversify our revenue streams that way? Um, that way, uh, you know, we can make sure the city is in a good financial health, uh, for the long term. And also how do we do it without, uh, you know, taking away points of pride for this community? So I think, uh, having a lower sales tax, uh, you know, I think that's one of the reasons we're not really talking about that today. Um, because that's a point of pride, I think, for, uh, many people in Lakewood. I think, uh, the street tax, uh, the way it is right now, I think, uh, that's also one of those sort of points of pride. So it's how, how else can we change the pie, the revenue? Um, that would help fortify what the citizens are asking for, what they want, uh, whether it's sidewalks or lighting or rebuilding, uh, parts of our communities, um, getting new parks and, 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 uh, making sure we have a police force that's at full strength. How do we do that while also, um, you know, not asking too much, uh, more from our citizens? And, uh, so I, I think this is a good, uh, healthy conversation. I like the direction, uh, we're going and happy to consider all the different avenues we're all discussing right now. Um, obviously I think let's move forward with low hanging fruit as soon as we can. Uh, certainly if we can do it the right way, as Counselor Harrison mentioned, um, in a way that doesn't shock our, our businesses, et cetera. Um, and just wanted to make that comment to our residents to sort of remind them how this conversation started. It wasn't just, uh, out of nowhere and it wasn't just the, uh, coronavirus, et cetera. So thanks.
Great. Well said. Thank you. All right. Mr. Wickman? If you want to unmute yourself, Mr. Wickman?
I'm trying.
All right. There you go.
Got it? Okay. No, nothing to add, nothing to add. Uh, Mike covered everything very thoroughly, so I can't, can't add anything more to that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Skilling?
Briefly, I just had a question about the taxation of special services and whether that list was exhaustive or whether it was just illustrative. And the only reason I bring that up is, uh, I need to know which part of this that, uh, I and perhaps others have to recuse themselves on some of these issues. If we're going to start talking about taxation of, oh, I don't know, legal services, for example, then that would be something that we'd probably have to refuse. Uh, so just wondering if that's, if that list was exhaustive or if it was just illustrative.
It's illustrative.
All right. So in advance, I will be recusing myself from any discussion on taxation of specific services that involve lawyers. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Vincent?
Yes, one question, um, on the tax code. And it's on the delivery, the Wayfair. And does that go by zip code or address?
It does not go by zip code because there are many postal codes that branch into other cities, um, or areas. So it would go based on your address.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Gutwine?
Thank you. Can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes.
I have a new fancy headset today. Um, so, okay. Well, first of all, thank you so much for this presentation and the, uh, white paper. It was very well done and a, um, very informative for, for all of us. Uh, so really appreciate being able to make, um, just have a more informed discussion. So thank you. Um, couple of quick thoughts, uh, and, and I do also want to thank the committee for going through this, um, beforehand. Uh, and Counselor Bida, thanks for your, uh, remarks to bring us all up to speed. Um, I completely agree that the standardized tax code, um, and joining the state portal process, uh, seem like no brainers. A, an added bonus to me is that if we can simplify something for our small businesses right now, um, you know, that, that's a great thing for us to do, uh, during these times. So I think that's a, uh, absolutely something we should move forward. Um, most of the others seem like they're going to take some more in-depth conversations. Um, I do have a question about the medical exemption. Um, this one is, you know, at first glance, pretty hard for me to imagine moving forward just because I don't want to see us increase the cost of healthcare even in a marginal way, um, right now. And I know that's a, you know, that's a major cost facing Lakewood families. Um, but so my question is, i- it sounds like from the presentation that what we're really trying to do is ensure that the original intent is followed, which is the exemption only applies to patients. And is that correct? I see. Yes. Okay, great. So then the follow-up is, would that require an action from us to clarify that? From us as a council?
Tim may want to weigh in on that, but I think we would want it to be absolutely clear so that there is no gray area. Because at this point in time, as we get challenged, um, of course it's dependent on the situation. But it has been expanded in many cases to cover practitioners.
Okay, that's really helpful. Thank you. Um, so I think it sounds like I may be more in line with what the committee was thinking is proceed with caution on this one. Um, you know, yeah, um, one, uh, one other question was the electric vehicles, um, it, how, I think you said that the state, um, got rid of that exemption and then the other cities as well? Okay. Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, I would definitely be interested in pursuing cigarettes and e-cigarettes and vaping. I'm sure that surprises absolutely no one. Um, and, uh, last two comments here. Um, I think that we should move forward with additional information and perhaps some additional education about the service as a software. Um, to me, this seems like a good opportunity in a growing industry, um, that we should, you know, be paying attention to and, and, uh, I think we should move forward with that. Um, finally, I would, um, like to continue the Tabor discussion. Um, because we're talking about a long-term process here and I don't really want to take that off the table at this point. Um, the, it's one of the ones that could have the greatest, um, and most dramatic impact on our budget in the long run. And so I would like to see us keep that on the table. Whether or not we actually move forward and put that to a vote, um, we'll be able to decide down the road, but I think it's early to take that option away. Uh, thank you.
Okay. So now I have Mr. Abel, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Franks, and then back to Chairman Bida. Mr. Abel, you, could you please mute, unmute? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the, I have a question about the occu- occupational tax and it kind of flows from what Mr. Bida had mentioned about the federal government. If gov- if the employer pays, uh, a portion of this tax, um, how do we handle school teachers and school personnel? Uh, also, you know, the, the low hanging fruit is great, uh, but I think we need and we should do those things, but I think we should also move toward, uh, putting some things on the ballot as well. Because it looks like even if things improve quickly, uh, in the economy, we're going to have a, uh, a hole anyway in the budget that, that was, didn't perform as well as we thought it would this year. Cigarettes by all means. And aside, there, there was mentioned about a special tax on recreational marijuana. If it passes, I believe in that initiative, it allows for such a thing. So if it passes, it's already built in, I believe, not prejudice the vote. Uh, as far as information services and software, software maybe. Information services, I think if we just, uh, put a heavy tax on things like the Pacific Reporter and Westlaw so that our attorneys carry a whole lot more burden, uh, I, I, I would back that. And there are questions like the, uh, short-term rentals. That's out there. That could be a, uh, good source of income, but we don't know whether it's going to be, uh, enabled in the city, uh, anyway. Would it be possible to, uh, Mr. Cox, to add some of these things that might take a vote to the special election if one is called on, uh, marijuana? If we just lump a few more things on that ballot?
Um, we'd have to look at the restrictions on Tabor questions.
Sure.
Special elections. I believe it's a November election only deal when you do.
You're right. Well, we could go this coming November.
Um, how much time you have tonight?
Never mind. Okay, I'll, I'll yield the floor. I have a few more questions, but someone else may answer. Thank you.
See, just real quick to your point, Mr. Abel, I, I do think we're coming close to this November's ballot, which would be potentially like next Monday or the Monday. Yeah.
Yeah, I think September would be the
The latest that we can do. Okay. Yep. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Yes, I do have just a few questions. Um, under standardizing sales tax definitions, do we have any idea how much money that could possibly bring in? Cause I, I don't see an amount listed.
I think that's one that's difficult for us to quantify at this point in time, but I do feel that we will see a lift because of the standardized definitions. The way our tax code is written currently, it's, um, broken into many different pieces. And I think as a business owner, it's really complicated to understand what you're supposed to be taxing unless you read the entire code. And we know that business owners are not going to have the time or the patience to read the whole code. So I do believe our compliance will increase as a result of the rewrite. Um, in terms of quantifying that, I, I don't know what dollar amount to assign to that.
Okay, thank you. Under removal of tax exemptions rego- regarding medical supplies, this one, of course, is of interest to me. Uh, when you're talking about practitioners, could you please be a little more specific about what you, what you're dealing with there or what you're consider- considering?
I think that's a great question and that's one that is up for interpretation right now. We have a lot of people that consider themselves practitioners and therefore they're taking advantage of the exemption. So we often get into the situation where we're trying to explain to someone that you don't fit the definition. Um, so broadly speaking, you could think of your, um, general practitioner, your doctor that you go to visit. Um, he may have hospital beds, you know, equipment in his office that, wheelchairs, things like that. Um, so a citizen could be prescribed that or he could have it in his office. And so we would say that the practitioner piece is not exempt based on how it's written in, in the white papers as an option.
Okay, let me just weigh in. I would really, uh, be against that kind of exemption. Uh, certainly on the drugs and some of the other things that were listed. Um, the cost is going to be passed through to the patient one way or another. And I just don't think that makes sense from my perspective. Uh, medical supplies, uh, should be off limits as far as taxation. Um, particularly wheelchairs and hospital beds. I, I don't support that. Um, I, the next question is regarding taxation of cigarettes. I can understand the interest in that. Is there any concern that that would create a black market? Or people buy them on Amazon? I guess they would be taxed if they're on Amazon. You know, one of the things that is of interest to me too, is that when I was in the legislature, it was during the time of the tobacco litigation. That money, um, the tobacco companies paid handedly. The money was supposed to go to, uh, health needs of those who smoke cigarettes. End stage, uh, congestive heart failure and emphysema is very expensive. And it was supposed to go to help offset that. It was also supposed to go towards, uh, tobacco cessation, education of our children. And unfortunately it got gained. Once the state got ahold of it, it went to many other things that really didn't cover what the intention was. Um, so this is kind of in the back of my mind as well, but, um, I know it's always a low hanging fruit to tax cigarettes and I get that. But, you know, some of these things I just have concern over creating a black market. Um, when it comes to non-essentials like carryout food and drink, um, you were talking about the wrappers on hamburgers, those would be taxed and straws would be taxed. Is that it?
If it's essential for the delivery of your product, then it would be exempt. If it is an extra item that is placed into the bag, then that would be considered a taxable item.
Okay, that's an interesting thing to think of. Um, let's see. Under taxation of luxury services, uh, that's curious to me as well. I think a luxury service is different to different people. And certainly a health club membership keeps people healthy. Uh, in the wintertime, a lot of people use them just strictly to have better health. Um, so that's, uh, landscaping and lawn care. A lot of people can't do that on their own. Uh, dry cleaning? That to me, um, I don't see dry cleaning as an essential service personally. So I would not be, uh, inclined to go with that one. Just about done. Um, under the modification of Tabor, we've been, we've had that in place, um, that we are keeping Tabor refunds for the last couple of years. And the money was to go towards parks and open space acquisition, police department, safety-related equipment, certain infrastructure, um, upgrading of sidewalks at some place, at some point. Could we please get a list of all of those projects that have been completed using that money? Those are, those are worthy projects, and I'm glad to see the money used that way, but I'd like to have a better idea of just exactly what projects we have funded with that. Kathy, you're raising your hand.
Thank you. Just very quickly, we can have that answer for you at the budget study session. We intend to go in more depth in terms of the use of those Tabor dollars. And Holly showed what date that is, and I'm forgetting, I believe it's in September. It's a, it's a meeting in September. So we'll have that detail for you.
Perfect. And then under annexation of commercial areas, maybe it's difficult to identify that publicly. But I would like to know if there are certain pieces that the city has already looked at for that, and if businesses have been approached about that, and if this is something that they do willingly. I'd like to just have a better idea about that, please. Thank you. Yes, Kathy?
I can answer that too. So we have been approached by the property owners over at Indiana and Sixth Avenue Frontage Road. And this would be the final build out of their master plan, and they have approached Lakewood with the potential of annexation, and that would be a, a commercial property. So it's very initial stages, but if you think about that particular part of our city, that's an area that's been under a big master plan, and that would be the final piece. And you'll learn more about that if the property owners decide they want to come to the city. Pardon me. Counselor Johnson, you're muted.
Can you unmute, please?
Thank you. That's near the Mills Mall, so I would imagine that would kind of make it a little more contiguous, if you will, as far as our land. Is that right?
That's accurate. That's accurate. The ownership and the properties between unincorporated Jefferson County and the City of Lakewood is a little blotchy over there. So they would want to kind of clean up those, those boundaries. And with that would have talked about entering into the City of Lakewood with a completion of the commercial area. So.
I apologize. I didn't mute myself when I was talking. Thank you.
That's all right.
Okay, Ms. Franks, your hand works this time, so we're thrilled to have that button. The floor is yours.
I would have sent you another little unicorn icon if I wanted to speak if it wasn't working. Inside joke. Thanks, Mayor Paul, and certainly thanks to everybody for all of the work that went into this. Lots of great information. I did want to just, you know, say that I'm certainly in support of the low hanging fruit, like we talked. I like the simplification and the increased compliance of some of these things that that brings. It just levels the playing field for similar situations, businesses where some who are maybe, you know, erring on the side of paying, another's not, you know, that simplifying of the language. So I would be interested in exploring those, those areas to increase that compliance. I did have a question, actually a few, but on the short-term rentals, there was some estimated sales tax and accommodation tax revenues in our white paper. And I wanted to understand whether those were best based upon our current known quantity of short-term rentals that are operating currently outside of the rules, or if that is the projected revenue for the growth that would occur if we were to open that up. So if I could get a little context around that, and so that's kind of question one, I'll stop there for the moment.
I don't have the exact science behind how that number was calculated, but I can get it for you. I believe it was based on what we're seeing for other jurisdictions of a similar size in the area.
Great. Well, we do have some good stats because we have, the Housing Policy Commission's been researching this, and so we certainly do know that some of, some of the core numbers we have today. So I would appreciate that to know. And then I know that a couple, maybe even more than three years ago, there was talks about, talk about the possibility that our lodging tax may be at a rate that was needing to be looked at. And I just wanted to throw that out there in case it's something that is meant for a discussion, and I didn't see that. I don't, certainly do, we don't need to bring that up at the moment, but if that's something that would be either an adjunct or baked into those discussions, I'd like to explore that. The other one was, you know, certainly cigarettes and, and vaping. I'm certainly open to that as well as other luxury services and open to the discussion for software as a service. That's something that I know quite a bit about, and it's a growing. I mean, they're moving away from box softwares that you install into rental software. And so I think that there'll be some shifts there. And the very last thing I wanted to, and it's more of a request than it is questions, it's on the modifications for Tabor. We have listed here, obviously the voters did vote to allow the city for us to retain those revenues from 2017 through 2025. In our white paper, we got kind of the total money collected into that fund to date. But it did say that projects have been identified to use all available funding. And my understanding was that the new open space acquisition money is just sitting there waiting for activity. So is that the case, or did I miss something?
Ms. Hodgson, did you catch that as far as where, I, I think the answer is the money is accumulated. I think one property has been purchased, but I think everything's just sitting there as far as the Tabor refund acquisition dollars.
I'm sorry about that. That's accurate. I thought, I had thought somebody else was going to answer that. That it, so the money is sitting there. We're struggling frankly with how to give an update to city council when we don't have the advantage of executive sessions anymore. So that's really been, that's just been a challenge because of the fact that we would be talking about specific properties. So that's actually on my list to talk to our attorney about this very week, about how do we, how do we share that information and give you an update when, when it's just tough to do it in a remote way. But we'll figure it out, and I'll let you know.
I appreciate that. It's just when it said that projects have been identified to you as all available funding, I went, well, I think there's still some funding that hasn't yet been earmarked for. And then the last thing is more of a, of a request, given the fact that we're close to this ballot and that we might be pre-staging some things for 2021. I have a lot of folks in the community that didn't really understand the ratcheting effect and how an event like COVID could significantly alter our future trajectory. I think we have a really good education opportunity here. We have the time, we have avenues to do that. We can certainly show some really good, maybe graphical representations about how that impacts us and really open the discussion up. So we have a real deep discussion with the community, and they're really informed where, how that would take five years to recover based on current projections and how they've already, and how that would dovetail in and relate to what they've already approved, how that would impact that. So I think it's a real opportunity for a real honest discussion. These topics are not easy. Certainly no one wants to be dealing with having to do cuts, especially in services that impact our community. But I think it's a really good chance to get in front of this and have a comprehensive conversation. That's all I've got.
Great. Thank you. All right, I'll go back to Chairman Bita, and then I have a comment, and then Mr. Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question here. In the white papers, there, in a number of different places, when you talk about options, you sometimes will put a figure or figures in as to, an indication, I guess, is what, what kind of revenue that might generate, or what, what that, what exercising that particular option might, might do. And my question is, what does that number represent? Does it represent like a net figure or a gross figure? In other words, does it take into account any additional expenses involved with implementing that? You know, compliance, registration, enforcement, those kind of things? Does it include those? Are those a separate consideration?
It does not take into account any additional expenses.
So it's just a gross number that you anticipate. Okay, thank you. And then I just want to say that, you know, I think a lot of the things that we're looking at are in, in this, in the realm of being more efficient, making it easier for our businesses to, to comply, and the resulting additional income that would result from that, make it simpler for our, for our staff to be able to, to gain compliance. So those kinds of things, I think, are really something we definitely want to look at. And some of the things we're looking at are, could be characterized as almost like widening the net, throwing the net out a little wider to make sure that, you know, those areas that we're missing, taxation would be, where other, where other entities are being taxed and some are being missed, to try and widen that net. Those I think we also have to take a hard look at. And then there are others that is really, are talking about a fairness kind of issue, you know, is it, are we, are we fairly taxing everybody or every entity? Are we not, not, are we, you know, unfairly letting some slip through the cracks? So those are the kinds of things I think we do have to really look at. But then there's others like, you know, for example, we don't tax groceries because we, we see that as being really essential. Well, I think there's other things that are, might fit into the category, like medical, that are really essential. And it almost doesn't make sense to say we don't tax food, but we're gonna tax medical. It seems kind of inconsistent. So I think it's something we have to look at for consistency as we get into these discussions. That's all I have. Thank you.
So just a quick check in with counsel, I'm getting, it sounds like a lot of feedback that what was outlined by Chairman Bita is jiving pretty well with counsel as to the low hanging fruit, deeper conversations on a few things, and, and really not an appetite, I think, for, for, well, I won't, I'll reserve judgment. Medical, I've heard both on, on that. Maybe that's just more education. I will say, just to reiterate too, I mean, counsel pre-COVID, our, one of our top goals was to look at municipal financing and funding and economic development strategies. And our whole world has changed, right? When we look at all of our hotels that are sitting at 20, 30% vacancy, or I mean occupancy, you know, that, that whole idea of a lodger's tax, what does that look like in the future? Look at our business corridors that are empty and all the ancillary businesses that thrived because of them, such as restaurants and stores. So I, I think we have a whole paradigm shift of how we look at our funding in general, and this is probably just the start of we, what we're looking at. And I think we need to continue these tough conversations and maybe things that we never used to look at, like services and coming from, you know, my own bias, owning a service industry, you know, luxury item type business, we would certainly be affected. But I think we have to look at these, we owe it as a fiduciary responsibility to the community to really look towards five, 10, 15, 20 years. And, and our biggest generator is Colorado Mills Mall. And we've known for a long time that malls are a challenge. So I think this is, is super productive, and I think we need to just continue to push these tough conversations moving forward. So, Mr. Abel, then Ms. Gutwine.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a really fine reference that y'all put together for us, Ms. Bjorklund and Ms. Norg. It's very comprehensive and easy, easy to comprehend. A couple of things. I didn't, I didn't probably look at the chart closely enough. It did outline franchise fees and what we bring in through those. Ms. Bjorklund? Hello?
I'm sorry, what was the question? I didn't understand the question.
In the pie chart you showed us about our revenue, where does, where do franchise fees fit in there? Is that a, even a category worth addressing?
So I believe that's in other, is that correct, Erin?
I don't believe it's getting captured as part of sales tax at all. I believe it's completely separate.
Well, it's income, it's revenue. So where is that posted?
Holly was only presenting to you the sales tax revenue piece because the budget is so heavily reliant upon the sales tax piece. But I believe the franchise fees are separate in the overall.
They'd be separate. It'd be a separate revenue line.
That's correct.
Yeah, well, okay. Can we find out what we're bringing in off of that and what's the possibilities of hiking the franchise fees might be?
Yes, we can look into that.
Thank you. Also, the hotel motel tax, where does that wind up going? Is that, does that become general fund expenditures? Thought not. Where does it go?
It funds economic development.
Okay, and through what channels? Does ED keep it and then use it for their own expenses?
Yes, those are the lodger tax. Yes.
Like, like a enterprise fee? Not the same, but it stays with the agency that generated. So right, okay.
Right.
Yeah, sorry, Holly. Go ahead, Holly.
It's completely separate from a general fund.
Okay.
It's own fund.
Okay. Is it possible to dip into, into that? And what would it take to require part of that go into the general fund?
So today, the ordinance is written that it only will go to economic development.
And so we could amend that ordinance, but since hotels and motels are not doing the bang up business these days, it's not something that would produce an immediate injection of revenue anyway. We might consider that for the future, though. I'm sure they will be booming again, and hopefully soon. I want to be very careful that we don't, in looking for more revenue and more sources, do things that might discourage business from locating in Lakewood and might in fact even be a, produce a chilling effect on current revenues. So, and businesses. So I think we need to strike a very careful balance in all of this. But I do like the way that it is largely, very much so, doesn't balance the books on the backs of our citizens with the fewest resources. I think it's been very selective to put any ideas of new revenues onto folks who can afford it more. So thank you for that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
I have Ms. Gutwine, Ms. Johnson, and then Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of follow up on what Counselor Franks mentioned, because I think that was a really great point about education and having a longer conversation with our community. I was wondering kind of what the, the vision is for this process, and if we will be able to use things like Lakewood Speaks again, and really get the public engaged and informed as we move this process forward.
So, yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Counselor Gutwine, the idea was for you to tell us what you want to, what you want, direct staff, what, what do you want us to move forward with? Where do you want us to do additional work, bring in more detail, and then create a forum for broader conversation? As was mentioned, the intent wasn't to try to hit this election that's imminent, but that's imminent, but certainly for the ones that necessitate a ballot question, it would be for the, for the 2021 year, which allows us ample time to have give and take conversations with the public. So you tell us and we'll do the, the work. I'm so proud of the finance staff led by Holly and Erin, who have done such a nice job with these white papers. So tell us what you'd like. If it's all of them, we will. Or if there are a few that you want us to strain out, we're happy to do that and then come forward again with a little more detail.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, well, that certainly makes sense. I think I've kind of weighed in on which, which ones I, I wanted to see and all, you know, see what the council agrees to. Um, and I think that just taking our time and really having informative conversations with our community and then really using all of the different uh, outlets that we have now, especially since, you know, we're all virtual right now. Um, it's going to be really important moving forward. So, thank you.
All right. Ms. Johnson, then Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. I actually failed to mention under services that we need to be very cognizant that Lakewood is a, an aging community. And a lot of our seniors are getting, having caregivers to help them stay in their homes. We need to be real careful about the way we go by taxing services. And also it sounds like nail care is kind of a, um, a luxury thing. But for a lot of seniors, they actually cannot do their own toenails. They need help. And so let's just be mindful that there's a lot of, a lot of pieces to this puzzle out there. And last thing I'll say is that yesterday, uh, we were speaking with a gentleman that's associated with the hotel industry. And unfortunately, it sounds like the reality, a lot of them aren't going to make it. So we've got, uh, they've got some serious concerns and that makes it serious concerns for us as well. Thank you.
Harrison?
Thank you. Um, I would agree with practically all of council's remarks. There's just one question that I have, big picture question. And that is, you know, there's always this misconception that we have property tax coming in versus sales tax. Is there any way that we could broaden the ability to pull in money from property valuation? Like a mill? I don't know if that's even legal. Oh, there's all kinds of frowns on everybody's faces right now, but, but it's, it's another low hanging fruit. And I just, I just wonder about that.
Well, I think Holly might be able to help us with that answer.
Okay. Go Holly.
Um, so you could do that. Uh, you would just have to take it to the voters. And I think it would have to be a longer term question versus in November, but yes.
So I, I did want to follow up with something in, that was mentioned. It is the franchise fee. And that is revenue to the city. My question, and we may not know that tonight. So Mr. Cox, if you can answer that or. I think that's fixed via our agreements, which most of our big franchise only come up every five or 10 years. Are there clauses in there that allow for an increase in the, in the franchise fee?
Uh, I'm not sure if there's language in there. There might be something anticipating future increases at the state level or under state legislation, but we are pretty well capped on what we can charge and what we do charge per those contracts, which have gotten longer in recent iterations. I think we're, we're doing some of them for 20 years uh, now. So it's very difficult. It's something we can certainly look at, but I think it's very difficult to try to get more uh, out of that revenue source.
Okay. Thank you. All right, counsel. So I don't see any more hands up and just want to reiterate. So Chairman Bita kind of went through and what I've heard is that counsel doesn't want to address the marijuana at this point. So I think there's a clear consensus on that. There was a clear consensus on taking on these lower fruit things and, and trying to administer those. And then a longer discussion on things that we may not all agree on, whether it's uh, nails or potentially legal services, luxury limousines, but to also maybe look at what that would look like. And then counsel would discuss that further on down the road. Am I missing anything um, in that summary? And I guess the second part would be Ms. Hodgson, is there enough clarity for you than going forward from counsel?
Um, thank you, Mayor. And just looking at that list as well. I, I think that gives us pretty good direction. Of course, um, I'll sit down with Holly and Erin and the other department heads who are impacted by, by the, these elements that you put that you, you identified as the ones to deal with first, and then we'll come back to you with additional information. Does that sound good, Holly? Are you good with that? Okay. She says yes.
I do, I do have two hands up here. So I have Ms. Franks and then Chairman Bita.
Well, the only thing I wanted to add is because some of the numbers we were provided were gross numbers. It would be helpful if you just took a swag at what those enforcement costs and kind of what it would net out to be. Because again, if something is, it, it looks like it'll draw in a lot, but the cost of compliance and enforcement and all that would bring that number down. That would just help for the discussion. So that's all I wanted to add. Thanks.
Thank you. Chairman Bita?
Well, I was going to throw out a suggestion. It seems to me that we're really not in a position to do anything about those items that would require a vote, you know, ballot initiative or whatever. And so I'm wondering if it's premature to even talk too much about those, if we should maybe bifurcate the discussion and focus on only those that we, uh, council could address and actually uh, you know, uh, address and deal with. And then, and then it's, we've got lots of time to, once we see where those discussions lead, then to come back and say, well, do we want to actually um, address any of these other ones that would require us to take it to the voters? Instead of having all those lumped into one discussion, maybe bifurcated out. I just throw that out as a suggestion.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Ms. Hodgson, you put your hand up.
Yeah, thank you for that, Counselor Bita. How about this as a path forward? What if we, as soon as the budget is adopted, so once that's passed, how about if staff um, puts a list together, kind of a path forward as relates to all of these items and what those actions, what necessary actions to each one? And we do that with a budget audit committee. So they get the first review and we have a long conversation with the budget audit committee and they can help us kind of navigate what other information do we need to provide? What else do we need to do? How do we set these up? And then we'll subsequently, then we'll have a study session with you, city council as a whole. And then you can give us direction. So the idea is we can make a little more sense out of this. We can separate the long term, need to go to the voters. Maybe we'll necessitate a really long public conversations. We'll put that in kind of one bucket. And then the other bucket would be the shorter ones, the shorter term, um, uh, items that staff can do, et cetera, with creating the, with maybe some of these that just create more efficiencies. And we test drive that with the budget audit board. Would that be a good way to do that and then bring it to the council?
I'm cool with that. Yeah. I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding yes. So.
Okay. I think that'll give us um, a little better direction too. And, and like I said, it'll help us kind of um, figure out if we've done enough information, if we need to do more, what that, you know, how do we go forward with counsel? So that'll be a nice way to test drive it.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Gutwine, you had your hand up.
Thank you. Just to be clear, I wanted to understand, is the only um, item that's not moving forward at this time? The marijuana? Discussion? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I would like to thank our budget audit uh, board, our chair of the committee, and certainly um, Ms. Norbden and Ms. Bjorkland. Thank you so much for all that you've done and to your teams. Um, it's been quite hectic, I know, with everything else that you have going on and trying to cut out. I would again ask that if you could send your presentation, and you're really great about doing this, send that. It's always good for us to talk about these numbers out in the community because people are certainly engaged and really want to know and understand where, where we are at. So with that, thank you very much. And that is our last and only agenda item. We'll go into reports. And Ms. Hodgson, normally you don't have one. I just wondered if you had anything you wanted to, to report on this evening?
Um, you know, I don't, but thank you for the opportunity.
Yep, great. Okay. So we'll start in Ward one and work our way up. Ward one, any reports?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Ward two, any reports?
No report.
Mr. Labir, go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna say no report. Thanks.
Oh, okay. Ward three, reports?
Yeah, we're gonna be having a word meeting Saturday, Counselor Bita, I believe. And we uh, don't have a specific speaker. I'm still working on somebody I had hoped, but hadn't had a chance to confirm or talk to Counselor Bita about. Uh, I did want to mention um, that the, the ketamine issue was uh, on K U N C uh, and in the Colorado Sun on August 14th. And it is something to look at. And it occurred to me that I wonder if, if people understand what I'm talking about when I talk about it. And, and I thank you for your patience as I worked through this issue. But what it has to do with is uh, that, that people are getting injected with ketamine during law enforcement encounters. And I think it's an important issue to address to protect our city from liability and protect our police department. And as we're uh, nearing the one year anniversary of the death of Elijah McLean, who was injected with ketamine August 23rd last year, I just, I, I think it's important to know um, that, that this is a statewide issue that's being looked at by the Department of Health and um, and medical directors across the state. And I, I think should be looked at, at our, by our own city. So thank you.
Mr. Bita, do you have anything?
Just, uh, yes, we have our award meeting on Saturday, nine o'clock, virtual award meeting. Um, one, come on. Thanks.
Thanks. Ward four. Nothing? Okay. Ward five.
Everybody has to save their energy for next Monday.
Yeah. Well, that's a nice segue. So please take the opportunity this week to reach out to staff or any of the folks who've made proposals for that evening so we can be as prepared and, and respectful of everybody's time next Monday night as we can be. So I just implore you to do that. Please, please, please. Again, I just want to echo my thanks to everyone. This was a great meeting, a lot of information and, and the pre-work that was done uh, last Thursday night by the Budget Audit Committee as well to get us prepared for tonight. And I mentioned this a lot, it's a challenging time in our city. And if you spend any time, especially in Ward two, you've probably seen the migration of, of our homeless and it continues to grow and it's big impacts. And it's a challenge for all of us. And, and when you look at, again, a lot of our commercial corridors, empty buildings, restaurants that are closing, businesses that don't have people. We really got to come together and, and really fight for the future of our city and be creative and be thoughtful and find ways to make sure that our community continues to be a great place, a compassionate place and a kind place for years to come. And so I just encourage you to encourage your residents to come together, whatever we can do. You know, even city beautiful type things as council members that we can bring folks because people want to help and it's not just food or rent assistance. I mean, you can go and see areas where we can go pick up trash or things like that. I mean, it's, needs to be all hands on deck. And so I hope that we can come together and, and do that. And then on a good note, on a fun note, we have a summer concert series that is going to kick, I think, this week with Hazel Miller, who gets to uh, kick off a lot of those. So that'll bring some sort of normalcy, a little bit more scaled back. I would guess it's probably sold out because it's so limited, but continue to look for those sorts of things. School is going back. So be cognizant of, of what's going on in, in those, you know, whether you're in a private school or a public school. So keep all those things in mind. And just thank you to our community. Thank you to our police department for all they're doing day in and day out. They're incredible. Want to make sure that we support them. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting if there's nothing else at eight fifty seven PM, four nine.